Morning all. It is the ten o'clock hour. It is Tuesday, August the ninth, two thousand and sixteen. The Board of Supervisors of the County of Delmar and the governing body of all other special assessment and taxing districts for which said Board so acts is now meeting in regular session. Only those items that indicate a specific time will be heard at the assigned time. All other items may be taken out of sequence to accommodate the public and staff availability. And after the regular meeting, we will be convening in closed session. And there will probably be no reportable actions. We are going to convene at one o'clock. We should be out of there by two, I hope. But as I said, there should be no reportable actions. Okay, we're going to pause for a moment of reflection. CAO Serena will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Sheriff.
Morning.
I'll get through this as quickly as I can, but I thought we would start off the meeting with some good news. So first, I would like to introduce you to Deputy Tobias Chidock. Used to be Toby, but now that he has a mustache, he goes by Tobias. I give him a rough time. I've known Toby since he became an explorer with the Crescent City Police Department. He was there from two thousand and two to two thousand and four. When he was nineteen, he attended the ninety-ninth Post Basic Police Academy in Eureka. He came back and applied at the police department, but he was lacking life experience. I argued that, but I was outranked at the time. Since then, he went out and collected some life experience, including serving honorably in the United States Army. He was honorably discharged in two thousand and fifteen, and he decided to attend the police academy all over again roughly ten years later. During that time, he could have probably slept through it, but he chose not to. He applied himself. He was a standout for physical fitness. He was a standout for volunteerism, and he received the Rotarian Award, which was voted on by his class. So I thought that was pretty impressive because he really went and he really gave a hundred percent, even though it was his second time around. I was more than happy to hire him, and I just wanted to introduce you to him and welcome him.
Welcome. And thank you for your service.
I tell them all to prepare a speech, just to see the look of fear in their face. Justin Gill, come on down. So again, with Deputy Gill, I've known him even longer. I actually remember when he was an explorer at the sheriff's office around ninety-nine to two thousand and two. He started his career there as a correctional tech, and then he was a dispatcher for a few years. He was able to go to the police academy, actually the same academy that Toby went to the first time, and he did well. And he spent the bulk of his career at the police department. I served alongside him, and he served under my command. And he was a school resource officer. He was later promoted to sergeant during his tenure there. He received Officer of the Year through Leaden. He received Supervisor of the Year through Leaden. And he is now here. So the plan was, I was going to swear him in yesterday, and I chose to stall that for a day because I think it's something great for the board to see as well as the public. And if you don't mind, I'd like to swear him in here.
Please do.
Deputy Gill, if you will raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name. Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Deputy Sheriff, congratulations. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Do we have any other new employees? County Council, actions from closed session?
With a motion by Supervisor Howard and second by Supervisor Gitlin and all supervisors voting yes, the Board is approving County Council to defend grassroots versus California Coastal Commission thirty-seven, twenty sixteen, zero 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 sixty seventy-three, CUMC, C T L.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I would request any deletions, corrections, or additions from Board members. In order to add an item to the agenda, the matter must have come to the attention of the county subsequent to the posting of the agenda, and the matter requires action before the next regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors. Is, are there any such items? Okay, seeing none, then we will move on to some brief reports from supervisors, and we'll start with Supervisor McClure.
Thank you. Yes, I had several meetings last week, or the last two weeks. I met with Senator McGuire when he was here to talk about his initiative for the Forever Home Plan that's coming forward. And then we spent an hour or so just talking about different things that are going on within his, within his office and within the district. The Senior Center, we met, and I'm proud to say that I think the Senior Center is on stable footing. We have regained our position. We were able to, we served thirty-four thousand meals last year, and we have been able to bring back the utility assistance and the heating assistance program, and that was about four hundred and sixty thousand dollars that was put out through the community for people to get their utility bills, assistance with utility bills, or with their heating, with wood and that kind of thing. And there's still plenty available. So if people are working with folks that need assistance in paying their heating bills or getting wood or that kind of thing, it's up and running. The community action part of our finances, we were at about fifty thousand dollars. We've been pushing with CDS for several months. We got it up to eighty-nine thousand, and now it has a grand total of one hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars annually. So we've been doing some, some great work at the Senior Center in getting back on, on stable funding. We also are in the process of applying to Kendall Charitable Funds, which is, deals with feeding people in rural America. And hopefully, it looks as if we're going to get about a twenty-five thousand dollar grant that ultimately, we would like to be able to expand food services in partnership with the tribes in the outlying areas of Smith River and Klamath. They already have a delivery system, but it's for tribal members only, and so we're hoping that we can come in with this additional funding that would meet the needs of non-tribal members in that community. So that's pretty exciting. And then the Episcopal Diocese of this area has given us five thousand dollars to re-equip the kitchen, which is in dire need of pots and pans and new silverware and glasses and plates. And so that is an exciting thing that has happened at the Senior Center. I also participated and cut up a lot of vegetables, I can tell you that, for the Breakfast Club on Thursday, and then making the fifty sandwiches for the veterans to be delivered on Thursday afternoons. And that's been going on for about two years now. And it's really interesting to make sure that the Breakfast Club is a very interesting place because it puts faces to folks that I think that the community doesn't see. And when you stop and take a listen and listen to the stories and listen to the needs and listen to the individuals, you find that there are some incredible people that live in our community that are kind of stuck. And it's, hopefully, we will find ways to assist them in not being stuck. I also did the agenda review for Solid Waste Agenda, and the County-City Two-by-Two met, and we discussed the application for the Technical Assistance Grant that's coming forward for the housing program. And we talked about the possibility of shared services within the city and the county to, in order to begin to maximize our ability to reach and serve the, with the outcome that we're trying to get to in relationship to the community. I also attended the memorial for the first responders, and that was a very sad thing for our communities. And it's just something that we need to keep in mind, and every time you see a first responder of any kind, a sheriff, a ambulance driver, a medic, a fireman, just give them a smile and tell them thank you very much for keeping us safe because that's what they do for us, and we take it for granted. So that's my report.
Thank you. Supervisor Gitlin.
Thank you, Chair. That was another busy week. After our last meeting, Angela and I drove down to Bakersfield as one of the, as an invited guest speaker at the sixtieth anniversary of the adoption of our national motto, "In God We Trust," which was signed into law by President Eisenhower as part of the eighty-fourth Congress. It's a great honor to have appeared with presidential candidate Rick Santorum and House Majority Leader Kevin McCarthy. Also via telephone, I was interviewed by an independent consultant for the Delmar County Fair. I was queried on how I view the future of the fair and how I see the implementation of the quarter cent sales tax in developing the long-term future of the sustainability of the county fair. And as for the fair, I just got results, some information from General Manager Randy Hatfield. It was a three to four percent attendance increase from last year. The carnival attendance was a record hundred and seventy-seven thousand. I think that was in the triplicate this morning, which was seventeen thousand more than last year, and also a record for food sales. Prior to the fair, I had the opportunity to observe the finalist candidates for the Junior Miss Rodeo Queen before Junior Miss Rodeo Queen Brinkley Webb was actually crowned at the fair. I spent some time at the Republican booth, the Point of Honor booth, meeting constituents and discussing the Point of Honor monument at the S-Gurve. I'm very pleased to report that the Point of Honor Committee now has a valid five oh one C three status, so you can donate money to them, and that would be so greatly appreciated. Future is very bright for this future icon, which is well situated, as you know, on the S-Gurve off the one oh one. Also managed to take part in the first Friday event last week downtown Crescent City. Wednesday, our local mental health board met, and I heard a presentation from Andrew Forst, who represents HASP and who addressed the Board on housing availability, and that organization indicating its interest in being considered as a partner in the implementation of Prop sixty-three Special Needs Housing Program Funds. And HASP will be invited to the September meeting. I believe that will be the first Wednesday in September, September seventh. Immediately after the meeting, Angela and I drove to Brookings, as Supervisor McClure mentioned, and attended the memorial for the CALOR lifeflight victims who perished from the air ambulance. Terrible tragedy. Tragedy is just inexplicable. We offer our condolences and love for the friends and family of Michelle Tarwater, Deborah Croon, and pilot Larry Mills. I also want to announce that, see Sheriff here, we're going to have an academy training, hopefully opening up in the spring of two thousand and seventeen at College of the Redwoods. I see Mr. Potts is here, and you'll make a presentation during the public comments. So they're actively looking for recruits, and what's particularly encouraging about this is that if you are interested in a career in law enforcement, you can actually take your training on Tuesdays and Thursday evenings, so you won't conflict with your job if that's your interest. And they want you, just like Uncle Sam wants you. Our community needs more law enforcement. I hope you'll consider that. The Take a Bite Out of Light program continues to conduct every Saturday cleanups at Battery Point and Howe Drive. Volunteers picked up no shortage of trash in what seems to be an ender, an ever-ending sea of cigarette butts that folks usually toss on the ground. The Take a Bite Out of Light program maintains this iconic area in pristine order, keeping it attractive to visitor and local alike. The volunteers meet every Saturday at Battery Point parking lot at nine thirty. Several meetings back, I made inquiry about the somewhat less than satisfactory conditions of the gateway to California signs at the county portals. One ninety-nine, Redwood Empire, Smith River, and one at the airport, I think, and one another down in Klamath. Due to lack of funding availability, these donated Delmar County signs have not been maintained in the last twelve years since each was erected. So we went out to look for a solution and met with Ed Fulton, our maintenance manager, and we actually found a stalwart young man, Take a Bite Out of Light volunteer and Eagle Scout candidate Daniel Standring. He came to the rescue, and as part of his Eagle Scout project, he cleaned up at least three of those signs. He did a terrific job, and our thanks and gratitude goes out to Daniel and at zero cost to Delmar County. I'm told Daniel is going to be here today at the meeting during public comments. I don't see him out here, but he is here. Okay? Very good. All right. Snuck in while I was reading. All right, so Daniel is here, and I'm so proud of you, Daniel, and you're off to Provo, starting university next Thursday. You're leaving Thursday, is my understanding. Also had an opportunity to meet the new Lieutenant Commander of the Crescent City CHP. It's a local product. Larry DePpe is the new commander of the CHP, and I look forward to meeting the commander at an upcoming board meeting. That's our report.
Thank you. Supervisor Finnegan.
Thank you, Chair. And I heard you this time that they're supposed to be brief. So anyway, I'll try to be brief. I had a few meetings also. Try agency, kicked it off with that. Supervisor Howard is probably going to report out that as well. We talked about the future direction and the coordination with the Council of Economic Advisors, who we are going to be leaning on significantly in the future as far as also revisiting some of the white papers for return on the dollars to this community. Went to and had a meeting with the Klamath Fire Department with their board as well as their chief and various members of the community. They are, aside from all the bad publicity, trying their hardest. They are going to be engaged. We talked about some public outreach and how to better staff that department. It really is volunteerism that they need to appeal to. Perhaps they will have a booth at the Salmon Festival. But they will, they have some strategies in place, and they have some good board members, and they have equally as many good volunteers in that community, and they're going to try and grow that. So they're doing quite well. Had a California State Association of Counties call with some of the subcommittees. Not going to go through everything that we dealt with because then we also were referred to the Executive Board, which I attended. Had an agenda review, if you will, for the help committee, which is the Housing Evaluation Liaison Program that we will meet on the tenth. And what we did was get together with some of the people that accepted responsibilities to form an agenda so it can be somewhat structured, can allow for growth within the committee, growth within the community, have some very assigned tasks, and to stay on topic. So we are geared for success rather than just get together to talk, and very excited about that. Will be having some appointments to volunteers, I'm sure. Met with the Proactive Financial Committee, again with Supervisor Howard, and we talked about, together with staff and the treasurer, about how it's best to finance some of the obligations of the community and what funds to use, and are there options instead of paying one point nine million dollars worth of interest? Is there a way to recapture some of that, those funds? But all in all, it was a good meeting, and you'll hear more about that in relation to the airport. The Family Resource Center met with the children's, regarding the children's budget. Thanks to Angela, the Children and Families Commission, for bringing that together and talking about who's missing and also adding some, whether it be the library, whether it be the Child Care Council, and of course, social services and probation, the Sheriff's Department as well. So getting a handle on that, how to really make that a working document, and how to better, better serve the community and identify those funds that are going to go further upstream to help our children and youth with prevention as opposed to waiting until we have to spend it on intervention. Then I went down to Sacramento for the State Association of Counties Executive Board meeting. We had discussions that we will make recommendations and bring it forward to the full Board at the next meeting on a myriad of issues. I'm not going to go into them at this point. We may talk about them when we talk about legislation. Everything from Prop fifty-two, which is state fees on hospitals, revenue bonds requiring statewide voter approval, which is not necessarily a great idea because we would get voted by LA. That's Prop fifty-three. You've got tax extensions to fund education on Prop fifty-five, fifty-six is more cigarette tax to go towards prevention research and law enforcement and health. Fifty-seven, criminal sentencing. Sixty-four, marijuana legislation. Prop sixty-five regarding carryout bags, charges for those, and then sixty-seven, a referendum to overturn the ban on single-use plastic bags. There are other ballot measures. There's about another eight of them besides from that. So stay tuned. You're going to hear a lot about stuff that's going to be on the ballot in November. It's going to be a busy full ballot. After that, I also went to the fair, enjoyed seeing some people that hadn't seen it a while. A lot of good exhibits, some people that actually belonged in the fair, I think, and then just a lot of good fun. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Howard.
Thank you, Chair. As with most supervisors, attended the memorial service. Really appreciated the sheriff's words at the memorial service, reflected well on this county's appreciation for what our dedicated service members do for our community in time of need. So thank you, Sheriff, for presenting those words for our community. Attended along with Supervisor McClure, our city-county two-by-two, and I think this is going to be a great kickoff to discussion around shared services as our financial needs restrict over time, so does our budgets for the city and the county. So we really need to think proactively on how we're going to address many of the issues coming forward, in particular, how we're going to provide those services and where partnerships might be needed. Attended a Natural Resources Committee meeting with Supervisor Hemmingson. Great deal of discussion centered around, in particular, the Wild and Heritage Trout designation, that we need to be diligent on visiting the usefulness of a designation like that for the Smith River as it relates to potentially restrictions on development. I know this community has been hit hard with designations over the last decade, but as part of the Natural Resources Committee, I know Supervisor Hemmingson and I are paying a great deal of attention to how these designations come down and how it could affect development in our community. As we know, we need economic growth to continue to occur here. So that portion of the discussion with Heritage Trout and also with Natural Resources, I think will continue over the next couple of months. Attended a meeting with Building Healthy Communities leadership and with a representative from the Board of Directors of the California Endowment, Christina Cashy. Interesting discussion on past perspectives that we shared with Building Healthy Communities and the California Endowment Board Member on how our community has participated as one of the fourteen communities in the state of California with the input of vast amount of dollars and how that's trickled down, whether it's to our governments or nonprofits, and how effective it has been. It was a very real discussion and grounding, but I think out of that discussion has come the commitment of the endowment to building healthy communities programs in our, in our area, in particular, and staying with it over the next five years and really focusing on what our community needs and not necessarily what board members essentially want in the endowment. Attended with Supervisor McClure, the proactive, actually Supervisor Finnegan, the Proactive Financial Goals Committee meeting, and we'll be talking more about that today with Mr. Leitner. And then in addition, some constituent calls as related to Red Mountain and making sure that we don't forget about the service and communications that Red Mountain provides to our area. I know that was written up in the two thousand and fourteen, fifteen Grand Jury Report. There's not a lot of movement that has taken place, and Supervisor Hemmingson has been pointing on this for the county along with CAO Serena, but we really probably need to rethink engaging Cal Department, California Department of Forest and Fire Protection, CAL FIRE, on getting back with the program because we don't need to lose that communication source here in our community. As Supervisor Finnegan indicated, attended try agency, and we'll be having a great deal of in-depth discussions with the Council of Economic Advisors. And then also some great results with our Community Development Department and our new blight enforcement officer, Dom McMello, in responding to some needs in Hiuchi with some squatters off of Shady Lane and getting that action taken care of and remediated. And I really appreciate the attention of Community Development on those issues. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Okay, I'll make this brief. Had a lot of same, the same meetings as other supervisors. Met with Assemblymember Wood as well as Supervisor Howard at the RCD office in Smith River. Discussions that mostly impact the farming community out in Smith River. As Supervisor Gitlin stated, there were some people from the California Fair Services Authority who did some interviews. I was selected to participate. Rebecca Desmond on Fair Support interview discussing about the fair and what we see for the future was pretty interesting. Had a conference call with the topic of demoyic acid, which is, we had an issue with last year in the Dungeon and Scrab area, and there's supposed to be a hearing tomorrow in Sacramento on that, so kind of narrowing down on choices maybe and getting some resolution to that. Had agenda review, as the other supervisors indicated. I went to the Reach CALOR lifeflight memorial services. Very touching, sad, sad state of affairs there. And as Supervisor Howard mentioned, we had a meeting from the Department, California Department of Fish and Wildlife, on the heritage trout designation for the South Fork of the Smith River, was very poorly attended. There was very few public members, if, you know, using the term public as not attached to some department or agency. And, and the presentation, in my opinion, was poorly done. Not very happy with, with the way they went about it. Very little notice. They also came through and said, not only did we not give very much notice, but they really need to push this thing through. They need to have information by September so that they can put it on the agenda for the October meeting. So not very happy about that. And that could be a reminder, if you have your cell phones, please put them on silent or turn them off, please. Thank you. And as well, we had a Natural Resources Goal Committee. Supervisor Sullivan, or, excuse me, Little Sullivan down there. Supervisor Howard, Supervisor Howard said. Supervisor Howard, Supervisor Howard said. And I did attend the fair in concert with Confederate Railroad. It was all good, very cold, but well done. Okay, so that's done. We're going to move on to public comment at this time. I'll ask for public comment.
Good morning Supervisor Howard, McClure, Finnegan, Gitlin, and Chairman Hemmingson.
Morning.
My name is Beverly Knoll, and last week you all received a bright green packet that had Save South Beach on it that we dropped off over here. And the reason that that was dropped off was for us to do some of the homework for you as we delve into this issue that we have at South Beach, Crescent Beach, but we commonly call it South Beach. We have some laws. What we gave you on the left-hand side was all the applicable laws, and on the right-hand side was all of the items that would support those laws. So we're not just here making up things that we want to see with our emotion that we feel. So why would we do this? We have an issue on South Beach with motorized vehicles and a bathing beach. And a bathing beach does not, according to California law, the law, says that motorized vehicles will not be complicating the issue on a bathing beach. So the concern that we have is the safety, number one, of the bathers and number two, of the environment. I might mention also, Sheriff Aberson also has this same packet over there, so that we have gone that. Mr. Serena, this one, we'll go to you here. There are several groups that are in here from the state that have already gone on this. We're not reinventing the wheel here. The California state voting laws are already in place that say vehicles shall not be complicated with a bathing beach. Harbors and Navigation Code, Voting and Waterways, State Lands, Coastal Commission, and Delnor Local Coastal Plan. If you look at that, all of those dovetail together, they all say the same thing, and they're all in place, they just use a little bit of different language every once in a while with motorized vehicles on a bathing beach. This has been designated as a bathing beach because bathers use it and they have used it in, as long as I can remember. I've been here 43 years, and as long as I can remember, bathers have used it. It is a bathing beach whether bathers are in the water or not in the water. It says so in our state laws. You might go back on that if you doubt something I might say. There's thousands of people that come to our community every year and use this beach. And why do they use it? It's safe. It has become unsafe now because of the motorized vehicles that we have down there that are not always following the laws. In the laws, it states the problems that if we have that, this is, California coast is 1,110 miles long, and in that coast, it says there that if we have any type of problems that we can't resolve or get there for our safety, we can't find someone to take care of that, we are to call our local county sheriff. I have the highest regard for our law enforcement here and the job that they have to do. I think they're overworked, understaffed, and underpaid at any point in time. So don't get me wrong that I feel anything towards the, our local law enforcement. But my perception, this is mine, not Save the South Beach perception, my perception is that between the DA and our sheriff, it's my perception that the DA feels that this is an infraction that he can't prosecute. He's very busy. It's sort of minor to take place, and in order for him not to prosecute it, it makes it very difficult for our sheriffs to go ahead and issue citations down there. He is confused that he doesn't know what 500 feet on the water is. Well, I think it's the same on land. I think 500 feet is 500 feet. And if you read in the laws in here, it gives you all of the dialogue that needs to be taken place. Now, the next thing that I would like to do is requ, yes, Mr. Hemmingson?
You've exceeded your time, Bev, so if you could just wrap it up, please.
I am going to wrap it up.
I'll give you a little bit of time.
I would like to be put on the agenda.
You said number two. Number two, so I'm thinking there's number three, number four.
No, 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 there's not. The next one, number two, is I would like to be placed on the agenda, Save South Beach on August 23rd, and I'd like direction from you, Chairman Hemmingson, on what procedure I should take.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Good morning.
Morning.
My name is Dan Potts. I'm a citizen here, also a student at the College of the Redwoods and an employee, and I am here to talk about the Basic Law Enforcement Academy that we're trying to get together. I am one of the people that qualified for this. We've only, it's an extended academy that's for the whole district, so it's the first academy in the state of California that's approved for this format, that it's an interactive video between here and Eureka utilizing our new telepresence system, you know, over $500,000 system we just put into the college here in Crescent City. So we are able to provide live classroom instruction from the Eureka campus to be able to accommodate this type of academy here at the college and the state. The state law enforcement has approved this type of format for the first time. I am trying to get people interested in it, to get it going. We need more law enforcement reserve officers, more people that are involved in our community. I'm currently on the Delnor Search and Rescue, and I try to stay involved as much as I possibly can. I do have information on the law enforcement academy, and you can always contact me or Director Johnson at the college, and if you have any questions or anything about that. So. And I appreciate all that you're doing, and please come and utilize the college as much as you possibly can. We have a lot of neat, interesting things happening out there with the new biology building that's just about completed and some other things like the food forest possibly coming out there. So two and a half acres of the college campus, we'll be looking at turning that into the food forest for Crescent City area. So if you have any questions, again, contact Director Johnson or myself. Thank you.
Thank you. Please come up to the microphone. At the proposal time would be best. Thank you.
Good morning, Angela Glor, Director of First Five. I have very brief, I just wanted to bring back some information from a meeting that I was at last week in Sacramento about a program that Sacramento County has been running for many years for child abuse prevention. They recently had an outside, third-party evaluation of the program, and it showed that they are reducing the likelihood of a substantiated referral for parents who go through this program by over 170%. So over four and a half years, they're more than, less than half as likely to have a substantiated referral. It costs $700 per family, and in Sacramento County, it costs $210,000 per child to have a child in the foster care system. So it is saving them millions of dollars, and I just wanted to bring their one-page evaluation. They are, they currently have an Ameri, they run this through AmeriCorps volunteers, and they are, currently have an AmeriCorps planning grant to take this program statewide.
Daniel, are you ready?
Hi, my name is Daniel Standrian, and I'm trying to work on my Eagle rank for the Boy Scouts of America. And I recently came here and talked about my Eagle project, which was refurbishing and cleaning the Delnor County gateway signs that are at some of the highways, 199 and 101 and down by the airport in Klamath. And so I'm basically here reporting on that. So at the beginning, the signs had a lot of moss on them, and there was like, some of the paint was kind of flaky off, and they're just kind of in bad shape. But, and so I talked to Ed Fulton, who was in charge mainly of those getting put in in the beginning, and he told me about how the paint actually wasn't in that bad of condition, but that they're, they needed to be cleaned, and they had this, they had like spores on them and moss and all this other junk on them. So he told us to use this, just this, like, not very much impactful solution, which is just a simple green. And so we got that, and we had some donations from Ace Hardware and Caltrans for my project. And we had about 36 participants total and totaling 126 man-hours. And here was the result finish, so. I don't know, I thought they looked pretty good. And so, yeah, thanks a lot for all you guys helping, your approval, and that I could be doing this for my Eagle project, and that's all. Thanks.
Thanks, Daniel. Appreciate all the hard work. Any other public comment?
Good morning. My name is Melissa Strom, and I am employed with the Department of Health and Human Services. I'm here today in conjunction with the recent salary surveys and proposals. My family consists of four household members and one income. As a county employee, I should at least be able to afford shelter, food, and clothing for my family. Unfortunately, I am able to do so without government assistance. Financially, my family and I qualify for HUD services and have received them in the past, but currently are not because the landlord that I, excuse me, the landlord isn't wanting to accept HUD at the property we're at. If it weren't for the fact that I have been renting from the same landlord since 2007, my family and I could be amongst one of the most, one of the many families in the county that are homeless. We rely on CalFresh benefits to help supplement with the cost of our grocery bills every month. My children have taken on summer jobs to help with their own school clothes this year. With the high cost of the county's medical and dental insurance, I am unable to afford to add my family members, members, sorry. Therefore, my husband and two boys have to rely on Medi-Cal and partnership insurance. In fact, I myself rely on Medi-Cal partnership as a secondary insurance to cover with the cost of my many prescriptions. Just like to thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Good morning. My name is Cheryl Williams, and I'm also a county employee, and I'm the vice president of our local union. And I have a couple of things to also share with you with regards to what Melissa just shared. I have a letter from an employee who was too afraid to come forward. She was afraid of retaliation and retribution for speaking out, so she did an anonymous, or he, I'm not sure which, they just sent me the anonymous letter. I would like to read it to you. I moved to Delnor County in 2015 to get a fresh start on life after some major life events. I was excited for a new beginning. I had never been to this area before and fell in love with the beauty around here. I was living with family at the time, so I applied for assistance and began looking for work right away. I soon realized that work is much harder to find here than I had previously thought. After months of looking, I was excited when I was invited to test for a position with Delnor County. I had never worked for a government before. My mother always had told me that if I could get a job with the government, it would be a great opportunity. So needless to say, I was thrilled when I was asked for an interview and was eventually hired. I started working and began to look forward to getting my own place and truly getting a fresh start on life with my family. A few months into my job, I was able to get our apartment. This is when reality truly set in. After paying rent and my monthly bills, I am barely able to provide food for my family. I am still on food stamps, but they were reduced and never cover all of my monthly grocery needs. You can ask my children how much of a penny pincher I am. I am still receiving some food stamps, and that helps them, but I always have to supplement with going to the food bank monthly and scrimping to get by to feed my family. The pride I felt in getting my county job is slowly wearing away. I am grateful for my job, don't get me wrong on that, but it is just not enough to really live on, just exist. I am still on food stamps. I go to the food bank each month, and what little money I have left goes to try to fill in the blanks. I am not even able to afford to put money away for rainy day savings. I had thought I would be making a decent living from my government job, but I find that is not the case. I still qualify for food stamps and Medi-Cal and have to stand in line at the food bank with the clients I help at work in order to feed my family. It is embarrassing. I had planned on settling in here in Delnor County and working for the county until retirement. However, I see my same position being paid much better in other counties, and I am very tempted to move in order to provide better for my family. I am scared for each month. I'm so nervous about making ends meet. I cannot afford to do anything fun with my children. Please don't chase good county workers away from our area just because we are underpaid. Please provide a better wage. And along with that, we also had a petition that we put around for the, all the employees, and I have a copy for each one of you here with all the signatures on it. It was presented to the bargaining team a couple of weeks ago, and all it says is that we, the undersigned, want to work with the county to reach a contract that provides fair wages and job security. We have been partners with the county during hard times and have endured stagnant wages, increased retirement and health costs, intense workloads, and a reduced workforce for years. We support our bargaining team in reaching an agreement that includes union security, which will strengthen our voices and help improve our wages and working conditions. As the economy continues to improve in Delnor County, it is crucial that the county recognizes our contribution to public service. Let us work together to agree upon a fair contract that lifts all boats. And there are 30% of our unit signatures on here, and there's a copy for each of you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Okay, seeing no more public comment, then I'm going to close the public comment period. You'll still have an opportunity to address the board on items that are on the agenda. And Bev, I'll try to get, I know you're leaving, but I'll try to get your item on the agenda. I don't think I can get it on the next meeting, but I will, I know. I'll, I don't know that I can get it on the agenda for the next meeting. We have some hearings, I think, and stuff, but I'll try to get it on in the next meeting or two. Your South Beach item.
Can I just check with Kylie?
Yeah, check with Kylie, the board clerk. We'll see what we can do.
Thank you all.
You bet. Okay, we have a presentation from Mr. Palmer from the National Recreation Area. He's going to give us a little update.
Jay Palmer, District Ranger, Smith River NRA. So I'd like to thank the board once again for the opportunity to come and report out. I will apologize for last month. I had it on my schedule, but I forgot to call Kylie and get on her schedule, so apologies.
That's okay.
So I'd just start off with a travel management update. Right now, the document is down at the regional office for review. Expect that back the last week of August, then Carol Spinnos, our NEBA coordinator, will put everything together, and we're shooting end of September, so.
Cool.
That'd be nice to keep that rolling. Then I'd like to do some updates on our REC projects. So we received quite a few funds from the Resource Advisory Council, and we do appreciate it. So just for some of our REC ones, we finished putting all the birds and bat caps on the vault toilets, so that'll keep all the little critters from getting down.
Thank you very much.
You bet. We fixed the damaged fence at the Patrick Creek Campground, so that one side is now open again. We replaced the damaged decking out at the Darlingtonia Trail, so that's all safe and good to go. We did find the water leak at the Panther Creek Day Use Area. We installed new pipe, and so after two years, that water's back up and running. We're in the process of fixing the last wooden bridge out on the Myrtle Creek Trail. I had the opportunity to go out there and walk that, and that was pretty dangerous, and so we've got, we've got the trail closed right now at the end, and we'll get and so, uh, we've got, we've got the trail closed right now at the end and we'll get that fixed and, and get it reopened. Um, the county road crew has been out and, uh, did all of our, uh, painting on our new, uh, arrows and, uh, striping and, uh, so thanks to, uh, road crew, uh, they always do a great job. We've got the, um, the Myrtle, not, uh, the grassy flat water system almost up and running. We had to send back the coordinator because it was broken. Um, so we'll get that and, uh, may not have water this year, but definitely next year we'll, we'll have water for, for that overflow campsite that, uh, a lot of people do like. Some of the trail work this year. Uh, we've got the, uh, the Mountain Club, the CCCs and the Northwest Youth Corps out there working with Clark Moore on a lot of our trails. Um, a lot of these trails, I haven't seen work in twenty years. So, once again, this was a RAC-funded, uh, project and, uh, once again, uh, we do appreciate the, the RAC funding this project and, uh, Clark Moore's, uh, leadership in, in getting this through. They're doing a lot of good work, a lot of brushing, uh, there's a lot of logs that they've been doing, uh, with their old misery whip. Um, and they've actually seen some, uh, out at, uh, Harrington Lake, they've seen some elk. So, so there, there's elk up in there when you can get to it. Um, you know, I had my visitor center pull some numbers from, from July, just to, you know, to see how many people were stopping by. And so we had over a thousand people stop at our visitor's center. So, they filled it, uh, almost three hundred phone calls and, you know, we've got people from Europe, Switzerland, the Netherlands coming in to visit the area, so, um, a lot of, a lot of use in the area. So we're, we're, we're getting the word out there and, you know, we, we thank the, uh, Redwood Park Association for providing all the, uh, good stuff to sell at the visitor's center. Um, we did almost thirty-two hundred dollars in July, so that's always good news. Um, you know, another RAC-funded, uh, project that we've got going on, uh, with Joe Gillespie and, uh, Mark Lozeth from the American Conservation Experience, uh, they've been out doing a mountain bike trail feasibility study. So, um, Joe and, uh, Mark have been out there, they've done all the legwork, they rode all the trails, uh, they're in the process of finalizing their proposal and, uh, look forward to seeing that. Um, I think there's a lot of good opportunities out there to, uh, pull some, uh, some mountain bikers. Um, hopefully, uh, we can get that rolling and, uh, get that on the map. Fire season. Uh, we're at the height of the fire season. Um, so far this year, we've been, uh, pretty lucky. We've had only one start. So all the activity is down south, a lot of big fires down there. Okay. Uh, so right now, we have fire restrictions, so campfires only in approved sites. Um, you know, the, uh, fire crews have been out doing some work on the Gordon Hill Project, uh, been out doing some hand piling, uh, line cutting. Um, so that's going good. Um, we've had teams up here, they've, they've, I think, pretty much done all the work they need on the D by D and so we can get that out, forbid this, uh, hmm, okay, losing my voice. We'll get that out, forbid, by the end of September. I was doing some, uh, yard work this weekend and got some stuff in my throat. Uh, prevention, alright, had a good run at the fair. Um, we were able to staff it this year. Uh, last year because of the fires, we weren't there. So, uh, I think we had a good run, a lot of good interaction with the, the public. Uh, we always look forward to it. And I think, because my voice runs out, oh, thank you. Okay, better. Um, so we are very busy out there, you know, and, and once again, we do appreciate the RAC for, uh, funding in a lot of our projects. Uh, without that funding, we would not get the work done. Um, you know, the trail work, having Clark Moore head that up, uh, getting all the youth crews in, um, like I said, you know, some of those crews have been twenty, or some of those trails have been twenty years since we've actually been out there. Um, and I think that's it.
Okay, Dave, I, I appreciate it. You know, it's really refreshing to, to get a report, um, from our largest landowner in the county that, uh, you know, for, since I've been on the board, uh, very few updates and, uh, since you've been here, it's been a, a breath of fresh air, so we appreciate you giving us an update on what you are doing and what's going on out there. Though we are know you're doing some stuff, so we appreciate it.
And I appreciate the opportunity and I did forget one thing. Supervisor Finnegan, I had to order up, uh, some more, uh, vehicle use maps and so once I get in, I'll make sure they get down here.
Appreciate that very much.
You bet. Thanks.
Any questions from board members? Yeah, go ahead.
Don't step down just yet. Sorry, sorry, Dave. Didn't want you to continue this too long, but I do have a, um, a question specific to the RAC funding. I know it goes to supporting a lot of the visitor-serving type uses of our forest and it seems like, you know, I've been on the RAC for over a decade. Why doesn't the Forest prioritize Smith River NRA and what prevents the Forests from funding those type of projects? Why does the RAC end up taking on a lot of those roles?
Well, I think, um, and this is across the whole Forest Services, that all the recreation programs have seen reductions in their budgets and so that equals reduced staffing, uh, funds available to actually fund these type of projects. Um, right now, you know, the NRA, we're pretty bare bones on, on our, uh, recreation staff. I've got one permanent person and three seasonals. And I don't think we've had a trail crew probably for twenty, thirty years, so.
So what could the county do to assist in communicating our needs for our largest landowner?
Uh, you know, I, I think you get with your representatives and, and, you know, let them know how important the National Recreation Area is to the economy of the area. You know, it's, it's a beautiful place and I think, you know, as an agency, you know, the district, we, we can't lobby for more funds, but, you know, the community can definitely express their wishes.
You're welcome. Any other comments or questions from board members? Any questions from the public? Thanks, Dave. Appreciate it a lot.
Thank you.
Okay, we're running a little bit behind. We've got a ten forty-five, uh, presentation, Building Healthy Communities Literacy Work Update. Who's going to be the, Angela? Is that you?
Good morning. So, uh, I'm, again, I'm Angela Glor with First Five Delnort.
And I'm Melody Fugate with the Delnort Childcare Council.
And this is going to be a collaboration. I believe that Supervisor Howard is going to take a role in this as well, uh, taking on some of the history. Is that correct?
Oh, I'm certainly willing to.
Okay. So we have a prezi. We are here today to talk about the Literacy Project, which is work that has been going on since January, uh, with a, a collaboration of partners and you'll see a little bit more about that. Supervisor Howard, do you want me to do this very intro?
You could bring it into the intro. I'll take it wherever you want me to lead in.
Okay. Uh, so this is part of, um, the California Endowment's Building Healthy Communities work. We are one of fourteen communities, uh, ten years, one billion dollar commitment by the endowment. Uh, we work in neighborhoods on prevention and in schools and the, the slogan is health happens here because that's what we want is health here. So this is again, the Literacy Project. Uh, this was kicked off publicly in June with the Literacy Symposium that was held on June seventh. These are some of the working tables. And, uh, what grew out of this was a commitment by the whole community to ensure that by two thousand and twenty-three, every child in third grade reads at grade level, so at third grade level by third grade. And this work started with the School Systems Implementation Team, which Supervisor Howard is a member of, and I will let him tell the story here.
So I think the most important piece of this and why they've decided to integrate me into the conversation is the history of this. It's not a flash in the pan movement by any stretch of the imagination. The history has gone back more than a decade. The conversations that community partners, whether it's our business leaders, whether it's our administration, whether it's our school teachers that are on the front lines of communication with our students every day, are having these discussions on the importance of basic skills with our children. Those children that eventually grow up and become partners in our community, whether they're working or not. And I know the reaction over time has been minimal, but over the last decade, with increased conversation with our community partners, we've been really able to focus some attention on really where needs need to be met. And we've had willingness and transparency in those discussions. And it's come at a considerable cost to many school board members, to many administrative leads, but at the same time, we've stuck with it and more importantly, our teachers have stuck with that communication by forming groups like Delta that have really helped the conversation to occur. So, when I say that history, that means like community partners like Jim and Gail Griggs, Anne and Gil Hess, who'd have contributed personal financial resources to making sure these kind of communications not only take place, but there's focus on CTE and there's focus on literacy. Important, very, very important foundations to the future of our youth in our community. And so when we reflect back on the last decades worth of work and all the efforts of our community partners and more specifically our administration and our teaching staff, I think it's important that we remember, we've been on this course for a long time. And although it's become a lighting point and a rallying cry here in the last year, that these efforts have just not been a flash in the pan. So hopefully that'll work for you.
So in partnership with Building Healthy Communities, the School System, uh, Implementation Team has been working on some college and career-ready goals and the challenge is really that initial reading. If kids can't read, they cannot succeed, uh, in our school system. So in January, a team of partners was brought together that represents, uh, both early childhood education and, um, and the school district and school, uh, teaching staff. And we were supported by two wonderful consultants from ThinkPlace, which is a, uh, empathetic design team. And we were looking to understand really that complex interaction between families and the education system because truly, reading and literacy is not just the job of parents, it is not just the job of schools, it has to be both combined and the community at large to work. And so we were really looking to, uh, understand that complexity and to create a, a platform that the community could own and carry forward, um, as we move forward with that specific goal of having every child reading at grade level in third grade. So we interviewed twenty-seven families, we interviewed eleven educators, we tried to have this, uh, go across our community and be relatively reflective of the community so that we could understand everybody's experience, uh, of early literacy. And we came up with ten insights. We're just going to talk briefly about two of them this morning, uh, and we have full reports that we can give you.
So one of the families that we interviewed, one of the first things we noticed is that literacy means something different to everyone. Uh, for example, this family that we interviewed, we went in and, um, the description of literacy to them was, sure, we have books and they did. I'm sure the children read and they did. Uh, the parents read, but it was not for leisure, it was for practicality. So one of the, we asked them to give us an example and, um, the daughter, who, um, at the time in the family was a foster child, and we asked what literacy meant to her and to the foster parent as well. And she says, "Well, when she brings something home each evening in her backpack, I don't take it out of her backpack and read it. I ask her to take it out of her backpack. She sits at the dinner table and she reads me the instructions from the teacher or, you know, whatever the event might be that's in her backpack." That was literacy in their, in their household. They read manuals, they read things like that, um, for practicality. So it did not mean leisure reading in their family, which, when we think of literacy and we think of reading, we think picking up a book and enjoying ourselves, it doesn't always look like that, so it looks differently to families.
One of the ones that struck me was that we had an awful lot of families who said that they felt very isolated and they could not get access to the support that they needed. And this to me surprised me most when they had a big extended family in this area but felt because of drug issues or alcohol issues or mental health issues in that extended family, they could not depend on that family for help. So even people who look like they, on paper, they should have this support system, they don't, uh, and that was really stood out for me. So after the symposium, at the symposium, we gathered hundreds and hundreds of ideas from the community about concrete steps that could be taken to, towards this goal of, of full literacy. And we spent several days after that, working through those ideas, doing some system mapping to see what systems exist, what systems are missing, to figure out how could we start to solve this. And I believe all of you have copies of what we came out of this with, which is a desired future experience map. We now have a pretty solid idea of what the experience looks like for families, children, and teachers now. From all of these ideas, we created this map that shows what the experience should look like in order to reach our goal. And, um, we'll leave you with those. They're broken down to zero to three-year-olds, three to five, entering kindergarten and then K through third, uh, grade students and, and specific goals among those. Then the next thing we did is we looked at emerging ideas and we talked about how might we statements, how we, we can see that parents aren't connected to a, a network of support, how might we do that? How might we change that? And we identified some systemic shifts that we can see to make the, a difference for that. And we, again, just want to go through a couple.
So one of the insights that we, um, that we came, um, away with was that, um, families in Delnort County, whether you were a two-working parent family, whether you were a homeless family, whether you were, um, a, a single teen mother, no one really understood what it meant to be kinder-ready. No one really knew what that looked like. And so that was one of the, one of the ways that we knew that we could come out of this was to really educate not just, um, providers of children entering into kindergarten, but families at a whole, educating the parent and the provider, no matter what that looked like, um, what it means to be kindergarten-ready. So another piece to being kindergarten-ready is the social-emotional piece, uh, that children need and what that looks like. For example, when you ask someone what it means to be kindergarten-ready, they might say, "Oh, my child knows their ABCs and one, two, threes." Then they might be able to sing that to you or recite the numbers from one to ten. But they don't know what letter recognition is, they don't know what number recognition is, how to spell their name. But more importantly, they don't know what it means to sit down at circle time and to be able to sit still for five to ten minutes at a time, or to be able to stand in line, to be able to share, self-regulation, and pieces like that that are so important to the families and to those little kinders that are heading into school. They just really, parents just really didn't understand what that meant and what that looked like. And not just parents at a whole, but educators of children in the zero to five range as well. So the expectation that when a child gets to school, that it's the teacher's job to help my child to understand and to get ready is a huge misconception in our community.
So, uh, the overarching goal is that every child reads at grade level by third grade, but to get there, we had to identify other shifts that come earlier because if you wait until third grade and the child is behind, you're too late. So we created a series of, uh, benchmarks, uh, and again, I believe that you have them all, but some of those in, involve what happens before that child starts school? Are they getting into kindergarten? Are they, are, are they getting into preschool? Do they have quality childcare? And we, some of these things, we already have numbers for what it looks like now. We have a goal for what we want it to be, uh, in two thousand and twenty-three. Some of these, we don't have a number for. This connection, this idea of connection to support is something that we don't know yet, but First Five conducts an annual survey of income, of the parents of incoming kindergarten students. We are going to add some questions around that so that we can start capturing that data and we will set a goal once we know what it is now. And, uh, right now, if you look at- And right now, if you look at children who are eligible for subsidized preschool, we only have slots for 50% of them. So, these are parents who are very low-income, who would, whose children qualify to go to a state preschool or a Head Start, but we simply do not have enough slots in our county for all of those kids to go. And the correlation of that is that all of those have waiting lists, sometimes months-long or don't get in. And I am going to make Melody talk about our little friend Marcus here.
So, one of the last on that colorful diagram that you have is that 50% of the children in our community do not have access to preschool. That is a scary statistic. We do need to remember that it is parental choice. Parents might not have the need or the eligibility for their child to attend a formal preschool. However, there are other ways that children are exposed to what needs to happen to get a child kinder-ready, whether that's in a family childcare, whether that's in a center, whether that's in a state preschool, some type of formal care, or if a parent is just staying at home with their child. So, I'm going to show you this picture here. This is Marcus. And in the background, you can see Marcus's little sister Lily, whose face is not in the photo. But Lily is three years old, and she was on a waiting list for an entire year to get into a preschool. She was on three different waiting lists and did not get a phone call back. So, what that said to mom was, about mid-school year, it was around Christmas time, she gave up. And she decided, I guess Lily's not going to be going to preschool this year. However, they have a second child in the home now, and she looks at Marcus in a completely different way. She takes a look at Marcus and she says, "What can I do to help him get ready for school?" She's going to start applying for preschools in early age. She's become so frustrated with what's available in Delnart County for her that she's thinking about getting licensed for family childcare herself and giving her children and other children in the community a preschool experience from her home. That is sad to me. We've been presenting this information in the different communities, and we continue to go forward with getting this information out and really talking about how important it is in the prevention side of reaching children in that zero-to-five age range and helping them prepare for school, the importance of that. We need to take a look at those waiting lists, and we need to take a look at what's available in Delnart County right now for the children who are being born this year, who are our target population for 2023. Marcus is a really good example. And sadly, Lily, behind him, let's cross our fingers that, you know, she gets in preschool this year because she's going to be four and entering into kindergarten in the 17, 18th school year. So, what we need to look at is what's available in a community? Do we have enough slots? Do we have enough childcare slots for our children? They are our future, and if we're going to reach our goal by 2023, that 100% of children read at third-grade level, we need to start thinking about the Marcus's that are in our community now. Do you guys have any questions?
Any questions from board members? Roger?
Thank you, Melody. Dr. Lawrence, that's a wonderful presentation. You made a couple of questions. So, what seems to be the major obstacle in developing additional sites for preschools? Are we needing more college students coming out and with the proper letters in back of their name? What is the challenge in finding, if you're telling us only 50% are, there's spots available? How are we going to increase that? You're going to have to have more preschools, as I'm doing the math on that. How are you going to reach that goal? What's the plan?
Well, we have to remember that it's parental choice. Not every child is eligible for state preschool, depending on their income. Not every parent wants their child to go to a formal preschool setting. So, we need to educate the parents as well. So, there's not a need for every child to be in a preschool setting as far as both parents working, that type of thing. So, we need to make sure that the community at large is educating on what it means to be school-ready. Yes, we do need to get an increase in slots in Delnart County. That comes from a state level. That comes from, our local planning council every year does a needs assessment, and the slots that are allotted for Delnart County is based on that needs assessment.
Could you identify, can you quantify that? How many slots right now are available in terms of our population? How many slots do you have for this zero-to-five age group?
I believe, I believe it's 300, but that's based on 15, 16 data.
Can you anticipate going up, if I'm reading your numbers correctly, extrapolating your numbers, up to 600? So, that would be 50%. The potential, I'm not saying you're going to be successful, but you're going to try to be successful to get 100%, is that correct?
Yes, but it's not all formalized care. It's not all formalized state preschool. So, please remember that there is parental choice there. So, as far as increasing the slots, we are determined to try to get our slots increased in Delnart County. I would not say we're not going to double those slots. That would not be accurate.
So, I will say that there is some progress on this. I know, so this includes not just state preschools, but also it could include private preschools, parochial preschools, and the Head Start centers. So, I know that the How and Quit Heads Early Learning Program, their Head Start, they are trying to move from a half-day school-year program to a full-year, full-day program. So, that will increase the quality for those children. And the school district is opening a new early Head Start center this year. So, there is progress, and it will just have to be, it could be that at some point, this board could take some action to pressure at the state level for more slots for our county, because it is a decision that's made at the state level on state preschool slots.
David?
Yeah, I appreciate you mentioning that. I know there's been some initiatives in the past, preschool for all, for one, personally talked with the governor regarding preschool, and then the conversation quickly shifted to vocabulary at 18 months, which he very snidely said, "What do you want me to do? You know, fund everybody's vocabulary at 18 months?" But I see, you know, I know there's a CARES program, I know there's preschool for all. I think your slots, you're shooting for 75% taking into account parental choice. And then we talk about Talk, Read, Sing. We really talk about the importance of, especially at First Five, and now I think that conversation is changing across all venues, of vocabulary at 18 months, which is that first indicator of vocabulary at third-grade reading. So, without talking about the stuff that you've already been talking about, it seems to me that while these goals are great, and I love the direction of the conversation and participation, but there are those special areas. I mean, this is a broad brush stroke, and I'm sure it's the same, Trygon Smith River gets some special attention, and Gaskin might get left behind, for a fact, Klamath has been abused in this area for some time. But, and I know for a fact that some of these percentages are really disparate in Klamath. What kind of effort is going to be tried or initiated to areas like Klamath to make sure that the programs have a closer eye on them, that the vocabulary at 18 months is paid closer attention to, preschools, reading at third-grade level, that we check at kindergarten, first and second? I mean, because they're a good 20, 25% behind, even the low 50% level.
So, there's actually a couple of different efforts that are happening in the Klamath community. One, the Wonder Bus, the mobile literacy library is attending more events and outreaches in Klamath. We, after we made the presentation to the Uroch Tribal Council, we were able to meet with the education coordinator, I'm going to, the director, Jim McLean. And he has reached out and is wanting to look into more licensed family childcare providers in the Klamath area, as well as he's hoping to expand his Head Start in the Klamath area as well. There's also a need for summer care in the Klamath area. So, there have been efforts made with the Klamath community through the Uroch Tribal Council, and I believe that there are going to be little free libraries in the Klamath area. There's other efforts that are being made to reach out to the Klamath area. There is only, at this time, one licensed family childcare provider in the Klamath area and one Head Start, an early Head Start program down there. So, we do know that we need to, in fact, there's a waiting list of 50 children waiting to get, well, 47, to get into that.
So, I was sort of setting you up to bring that out. Thank you very much.
And I would just add that when this similar presentation was made to the Uroch Tribal Council, they officially adopted all of those goals. So, they are really taking some responsibility and ownership of this process as well.
And one of the things that is so exciting about early literacy and in homes of family childcare providers is, the Child Care Council has just signed on with a partnership grant through Early Head Start, and we're bringing enrichment programs to children and families in Delnart County through that program. And so, that's one of the areas we have funding to be able to help family childcare providers increase their home to Head Start standards, and that literacy is a huge portion of Head Start and early Head Start.
Supervising clerk?
Yes, I have a couple of questions, and I don't know if it possibly could be direction. But when my grandson was first born, he was born to Kaiser Insurance. And they had this incredibly aggressive supportive program for the mommy and me. And it was, it was mother and child groups that would be, you know, at first, they were randomly assigned, but I can tell you that the woman that my daughter bonded with in the group, they, you know, my grandson's now 16, and they are still fast friends and good companions and all of that. So, I don't know if we're tapping into that locally with either asking Blue Shield to help to fund that kind of program, because I think that's our number-one insurance provider, but also asking Sutter to fund that type of program that could bring new mothers and children together, because that period of isolation sometimes gets people pointed in the not-so-happy direction. So, I'm hoping that that could be a piece.
Yes, so, the Family Resource Center of the Redwoods runs parent groups under the nurturing parenting program. So, it is exactly that, trying to get new moms and their babies together so that they have that network of other mothers that they know with similar-aged children. And the healthcare district just in June agreed to fund an AmeriCorps position at the FRC to expand that program and focus particularly on dads, to get father involvement in families, because that is really critical, bringing families together. So, more of that will be happening with, as the FRC gets their AmeriCorps program going up in September.
And then the next question is relating to early Head Start and home-based Head Start? Is that a giant focus, I'm hoping? I was a Head Start, home-based teacher, and I saw a giant difference once you could get inside, you know, once you're in the house, it becomes. So, is that planned to increase the home-based system of support?
I don't want to speak for early Head Start as far as the home visitation program, but early Head Start, the home visitation piece is always a priority in Delnart County. They do a wonderful job.
Yeah, it's very.
They do. I don't know what their enrollment is. Athena Shooterus is the director of that program, and she would better be able to answer that. But I do know in the family childcare setting, yes, early Head Start is a priority, and our goal is for all of our family childcare providers to incorporate this program by 2023. That's our commitment from the Child Care Council.
Good job. Thank you.
Chris, anything else?
I shouldn't have.
Didn't want to, didn't want to take away any wind over here, because I know Supervisor Hemmingson has participated in this as long as many of us have here on this board. And, you know, we've benefited as a community from having great leadership in recent years, especially with Superintendent Harris, who I see here in the audience today. It's made critical steps in making processes like these happen. And more importantly, you know, bringing back to the conversation that we had earlier with Building Healthy Communities, without the endowment's involvement here to help make these conversations happen, they probably wouldn't have happened. And that's a scary thought in large terms. That's a very scary thought for this community. And we've been able to shed a lot of light over the years on these issues and have really good conversation, but action needs to be taken. And I think we've built to the point with our leadership we have here in the room today and with this board through our children's budget, to begin not just to work in these silos that we've been in, but to come together with a clear focus to make sure really that Marcus and Marcus's partners read by third grade in 2023. And I know he will, because this community will be committed to that. And so, I'd like to see this board take some form of action today, and maybe Supervisor Hemmingson, he could help articulate some of that. I know Supervisor Gitlin made mention of actions that potentially could be taken at a state level in increasing from 300 to 600 positions, what that might look like from a board standpoint in taking action, maybe going in partnership down to our state-of-California offices in Sacramento and saying, "Hey, Governor, why can't you help?" So, Supervisor Hemmingson, please take it from there.
Right on. Yeah, I'm really excited to see this really, really start to come to the top now. I mean, we're, we need to engage all of our partners, Health and Human Services, which I think would be a great addition, if they're not already there, the schools, this group. You know, I'm not too worried about Marcus and Lily by the pictures that I see here, because I think the parent got involved and knows what these two kids need to have. And I think that's the component maybe that, I don't want to say it's missing, but I think it's really important that the education of the parents is maybe even more important than trying to educate the kids later. So, we need to get involved early and often in order to make this succeed. So, you know, I think, I would love to see Heather get involved with us a little bit. Maybe if we can get some sort of direction there, maybe come back with something. If you guys could all collaborate and make a move towards something that we can really get our, get our arms around. I mean, we're all, I think we're all very supportive of this, and we've gotten our arms around getting this early education. But how we go about that, it always seems to me that we're trying to early educate them later rather than early educate them earlier. So, that has to start, I think, with the parents, and that education needs to happen when that child is born. We need to educate that parent on where they're going with this. So, that's what's important, important to me, and I think we need to get in that mindset.
I just wanted to add one more thing that I think I read yesterday, that there's a bill going through the state level that is moving, still has legs, that will raise the threshold for people who can be in state preschool. So, the income level is going to go up, so we will see more eligible people at state preschool, which is a very good thing.
And I just hate income-eligible things. I think it's, when you start, yeah, when you start segregating the population, I think that's totally wrong. Kids need an intermix of all kids, and when you're a kid, you don't care what anybody's income is. You're just there because you're a kid. And so, income-eligible always, I always get turned off by that term, income-eligible. If it's available, it should be available. That's just my personal thought.
We should tell the governor.
Okay. I will, all right. Chris?
Chair, I guess I'd like to see something a little bit more concrete. We, this board is taking steps with the Children's Bill of Rights, and I think maybe something more appropriate would be an action directing staff, maybe our CEO and appropriate department heads, to have a conversation where they could report back to us maybe in 30 to 45 days with actionable steps, both short-term and long-term, where they can help participate in this process. And maybe that potentially can culminate, if the board is so willing, in some type of resolution that reflects the community's goal to read by 23. And I'm not sure if the board would be willing to do that, but I think that would be a concrete step that I'd like to see happen.
Well, I think, I think we've given direction that we want the Assistant Director of Health and Human Services to work together to see if we can maybe bring something back to the board, something concrete that we can look at and say, "Yeah, we are," which we are all on board with what these things are put out, but let's see what we can do to help. Let's see how we can make this collaboration work.
May I offer more concrete? We are offering, starting next week, we have all of this information displayed at the College of Redwoods, and we will be offering, have time slots that people can come and do a formal walkthrough of this whole process and the results. And so, that was. And so that would give staff a better picture of what all of this work is and where we see those systemic shifts happening.
David, you have something else?
Yeah. I mean, it's great work being done by a lot of different groups. The school board is and the schools partners with First Five and the rest of the community in early identification, pre preschool, if you will, or pre K. The literacy symposium, the group that's represented here today, First Five, I would like to have First Five make a presentation, you know, to this board along the lines of Talk, Read, Sing, along the mommy and me of what's being offered at the Family Resource Center, and not as competition, but how it really joins and melds with all the efforts. So then the board, if we need to do a resolution of support, fine. If we backed up my goals as articulated, fine. And then I'm going to just throw in a little two cents here of something that gets talked about once in a while that nobody wants to really talk about, is why the United States of America is the the top 30 educated and wealthy countries in the world, is the only one that does not have paid parental leave. And if you really want to start talking about Talk, Read, Sing, and you want to talk about the parents' involvement, what is our financial commitment to our parents when that baby is born to ensure that they have time to spend with that child in the beginning? So that's a larger conversation that always gets people squirming in their seats, but it's one we better start looking at.
And that's one of the reasons why this conversation is going to continue.
Thank you.
Good. Any other comments from board members, public? Anybody want to get up and say anything?
My name is June Sadler, which I think you already know. I'm new to the area, three months. I'm very concerned, and I think the community in sharing together resources is a very helpful idea. But I often wonder about the very less fortunate in our community. We have so many homeless, so many mentally challenged. On my street alone, there are two motels that supposedly have been converted into apartments. They're not apartments. There are eight and nine people sleeping in one room with no kitchen facilities. There are two motels on my street exactly like this. The parents don't read. Their children are not interested in reading. I've offered to take them in my car. I've offered to walk them to the library. They don't read. Their parents don't read. I think this is a concern that also needs to be addressed.
Thank you. Anything else, Kevin?
Good morning. My name is Kevin Hartwick, and I'm a member of the School System Implementation Team and the Initiative Leadership Team at Building Healthy Communities. And one of the important points that has been brought up but needs to be reemphasized is that the infrastructure that's built is cost money, and the reality is we don't have it in any other way. What I there's one particular point in the initiative that's underway has a definite life period through 2020. There is a discussion going on at the endowment how to how to adjust and adapt to the phase out of the process. But it's not it's not just the endowment that needs to have this discussion, when the opportunity provides itself. Not only do we need to be worthy partners in this process, but we need to be advocates for what we need going into the future. So there is no there is no off-limits in the discussion of that our community will continue to be a great partner with the with the California Endowment. The advocacy that's necessary is time is our friend as well as resources. You can choose you can choose any version of what may be the outcome of their decision, but we benefit by the extension of time in their process. And when it was said this initiative would have not taken place without the endowment, that's an accurate statement. What would have taken place is very well-meaning groups funded in their own rights and mostly underfunded, trying to take on pieces of it and having a very difficult time with the headwinds that are in front of them. Now there is there is a push. The other part is, even though it has been a strong presentation, this initiative is fragile. The idea that you all are supporting and the other agencies are supportive is only is what we have right now, including great people leading these agencies. To the extent one change takes place, it could change the whole outcome of this initiative. Making very definitive steps, as labeled concrete, that those coming after you would be required to follow, is the only way we can assure these intentions are carried out. Supervisor Howard brought out a history. This is not this is not a initiative that's presented today that has not been part of every educator's process for 100 years here, but it is a rare time in this community where we may see very specifically Marcus go across the goal line. Why Marcus is so important is that you should be worried as individuals whether Marcus reads. Marcus should be in your thoughts. You should be concerned that you're going to be at the party when he does read, and we're all going to be there. But it is a it is a partnership that is extremely fragile because of the number of people that are involved, and I hope that the steps that you take in the next 60 days are extremely concrete and very forceful. The other request would be that this topic never leaves your agenda, and that you formally say that we are going to read, our children are going to read at third grade level in 2023. Hopefully, that's very specific to anybody that may hold these seats into the future. Thanks.
Great. Thanks, Kevin.
Supervisor, Chair, you know, if I could, you know, great point, but also to integrate it in everything. In other words, our Economic Development Goal Committee, dollars spent, early childhood, $7 return, and stuff like that reinforced across all the different committees.
Anybody else have anything to say?
Great presentation. Appreciate it. We will be, hopefully, this will stay on the very top of our list for a long time. Hopefully, it won't have to stay on our list for a long time, and we will get some results. That's what that's what the goal is, and we're certainly, I think we're certainly willing to put forth our greatest effort to make sure that that does happen. So again, thank you.
Thank you very much for your time today.
Okay, getting back to, let's get a, well, let's let's move on to the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any public comment on the consent agenda? Okay, seeing no public comment, then I'll bring it back to the board. Any questions or comments?
Only comment I have, Chair Hemmingson, is a number nine, which is to support a request, CalWorks and Housing. Excellent. This is the kind of stuff that is phenomenal to bring forward.
Okay, thank you. Okay, no other comments? Kylie, would you pull a vote, please?
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes, I need to recuse myself on item number three for conflict of interest. Okay, within that consent agenda, I believe there was a resolution, proclamation, proclamation. Supervisor Howard, would you please read that?
Thank you, Chair. This proclamation is specific to suicide prevention and awareness month 2016, whereas suicide is the 10th leading cause of all deaths in the United States and the second leading cause of death for ages 10 through 24, whereas suicide is the 11th leading cause of death in California and the third leading cause of death from ages 10 to 24, whereas over twice as many people die by suicide in California annually as by homicide, whereas there are 1,028,725 suicide attempts in the United States annually, translating into one attempt every 31 seconds. Whereas there are approximately 4.6 million survivors of attempted suicide in the United States, and whereas suicide and suicidal behavior occur among all age groups across all socioeconomic, racial, and ethnic backgrounds. Whereas the stigma associated with the mental illness and suicide works against suicide prevention by discouraging persons at risk from seeking lifesaving help and further traumatizing survivors of non-fatal attempts, the suicide rate of Delnart County is almost two and a half times the California rate. Whereas eight out of 10 people considering suicide give some indication of their intentions, most people who attempt suicide do not want to die. They want to stop the pain and hurting. Whereas suicide is preventable, and prevention starts with recognizing the warning signs and taking them seriously. Whereas the County of Delnart Health and Human Services Agency is committed to raising awareness, providing education and training on suicide prevention, and reducing stigma. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Delnart County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaim September 2016 as Suicide Prevention and Awareness Month, and calls upon families, government agencies, businesses, schools, healthcare institutions to support increasing awareness and reducing stigma on this ninth day of August 2016, signed by Chair Hemmingson.
Thank you. Is there someone here to receive that?
I want to do a little sidebar. People that have left, I was at that conference, oh, Gordon Clay from Brookings, Oregon. I was at that literacy conference with Dr. Powell, and I was so impressed of how the city and the state and the county were working together. It was mind-boggling. It made me want to move back to California where I raised my daughter, but I like the scenery up in Brookings. Not necessarily our school system, but I like the scenery. Mr. Chair, supervisors, and guests, did you know that every two hours, a teenager in America takes their own life? There's a crisis, as I understand it, upriver in the Uro- Uroch Nation, and Delnart County is a proclamation read, is two and a half times the California average for suicides. And just across the border in Curry County, 29% of eighth graders and 23% of 11th graders seriously considered attempting suicide last year. September 1 starts Suicide Prevention and Awareness Month, and we've got big dreams. We're looking for volunteers to help us eliminate the stigma around suicide by September 30. We're asking for community volunteers who have seriously considered or attempted suicide sometime in their lifetime to come out publicly and talk about it and say, I'm still here, so that at-risk people will feel safer to talk about what's going on and get the necessary help they need before they decide to put a period at the end of their life. Be courageous and come out as a survivor, and let our youth and veterans see an example of how good life can be. And my hat says, not you're okay, you're Uroch, which people say, but it says, you're are you okay? And I want people to start asking that of anybody they see that might be depressed or in trouble. It's not going to trigger them the wrong way. It's going to show them that they've got somebody that cares. Second, we're looking for retail establishments to volunteer to post a window sign during the month of September and to place on their counter this little rack that holds our semicolon cards. This is all free material, and holds buttons, which I'd like each one of you to have in my packet, that says, I'm willing to talk. I'm willing to listen. You've got a problem, I'm willing to listen. And I'm going to make anybody that is willing to step up, we're going to put it on the website and make it public so people know. And I think I've got Mix Espinoza involved up up north. The card says, we're not a bad person. The little card says, you're not a bad person. It gives some information on suicide and an emergency number, and all materials are free, and we list them as a partner on our website. Right now, we've got eight partners here in Crescent City, and the Wild Rivers Foundation, Community Foundation is also part, and Health and Human Services is another. Third, 95% of youth in crisis will not call a crisis phone line. The younger generation uses cell phones less for actual conversation and more for text messaging. Enter the number in your mind, 741-741, and remember that. Young people might not be able to articulate their feelings in a phone conversation and actually have a very difficult time doing it, yet their emotions become crystal clear in a text conversation. People texting this organization are connected to a volunteer trained in the use of text messaging and familiar with the grammatical quirks, abbreviations, and emoticons used in text messaging. Say that you're at a public place or on a school bus. They can actually talk text back and forth without being overheard, so it's totally private. The National Domestic Violence Hotline took four took 20 years to get 4 million calls. This service took less than three years to get 20 million text calls and contacts and a huge number of survivors. And one of the thing about this that is really interesting that can't happen in a phone conversation is that text that somebody is sending, 140-word max, goes into the computer that has the 20 million already there and says, on the counselor's screen says, when 84% of the people say this, they're a cutter, or whatever that 40 words came out, and then immediately it says, here's the next question to ask. And it amplifies the speed at which they get the emotions and what is happening that person in the moment saw, or calling 91 or saving that life. It's an amazing, amazing system, and there's a couple YouTubes, the creator texts that number or texts crisis text line, and she's got two TEDCOGS that'll break you down. We are passionate, I think you can tell, we're passionate in our belief that suicides are preventable, and that prevention is a shared responsibility where everyone has the potential to make a difference. Ask a friend who seems to be depressed or is going through a divorce or a big problem at work, ask, are you okay? One conversation could save a life. Do you do I have any volunteers? And any questions?
Nicely done.
Thank you. And thank you for the proclamation, and I'll pass these on. I'd like each one of you to, and Chair, to stand.
Any questions from board members, comments?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Good job.
Yep. It's amazing, I mean, it just, I see kids up there, and and they're in pain, you know, and I know what's happening, and Anthony Tremboli, I'm working with in that, you're tribal court, I know what's happening upriver, and it's just, I want the kid, I don't remember his name, Marcus, I want him to end up here as one of you, then end up in Pelican Bay.
What was the number again?
741-741, and I hope every kid in the school system has that in their brain.
And that's just a text number?
Yeah, you you just put that in, and then you can do, you can sit there, and they'll come on with the text, or you can say, help. Just a sidebar, I was helping the students who are at Redwood Community College or Colleges of the Redwoods yesterday, putting together domestic violence PSA that I hope you guys get to see. It's beautiful. And I asked them, and there were about 13 kids there, I asked, do any of you know what SOS is? They all knew BTW, they all knew LOL. Not one of them knew what SOS is. Not one of them knew what SOS is. And I hope you do. Save our ship. It's going down. And I want, I'd do that one, but not what it means. So, anyway, a difference in our generations, and we have to keep up with where they are.
And are your cards in all of the schools?
The school's been down. We're definitely going to get them there. I'm working with Wild Rivers, and we're going to set that up. They're already at coastal.
Connections.
Coastal connections. I started with K-Fog, and tsunami games, and the market, and so we're getting it out there.
Cool. Thank you.
Great job. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chair?
Yes.
I just want to say, this gentleman, you bring a, you bring a message of hope to our community. I hope you could come back to our board and bring back some of your success stories in the form of some young people who are of age and can tell us about some of their tribes and how they got through them as a message of hope. I hope you plan on coming back here for us.
Okay. All right. Moving right along, a brief report from the CAO.
Over the last couple of weeks, I attended a number of the committee meetings that the board members have already talked about, the Homeless Ad Hoc Committee, Proactive Financial Management Committee, had a meeting with our harbor master, the sheriff, participated in meetings on collective bargaining, attended the Natural Resources Committee meeting, had numerous department and staff discussions, attended the Calore Memorial, was part of the panel interviews for the first round of the Health and Human Services Director position interviews, and attended the city-county two-by-two, and additionally, I was fortunate enough to be able to make it to the fair, and my daughter participated and came away with a couple of awards, and that was real nice, and was able to also go to the, into the barns and watch some young people do some of the all-around showmanship, and it was excellent, and watched a little of the bucket calf, which was, I think they had 130 kids this year. It's amazing. It's a great program, and Alexander Derry obviously is a leader on that, but I was able to watch this time because my, my daughter didn't participate in that.
Great. Thank you. Okay, budget transfers.
Move to approve budget, move to approve and adopt budget transfer 0618, 0619, 0620, 0621, and 0622.
I have a motion in a second. Any public comment on these budget transfers? Seeing no public comment, then we bring it back to the board. Questions? Comments?
I have one question, and that is, why was the request for social services to help with the recreation department, why was that so late in coming?
All of these are essentially reconciliations at the end of the year based on billings.
Oh, okay.
So these are, it's justification.
When I read the staff report, I thought I read that the state had just recently approved it, but it didn't have a time.
Yeah, on the end of this one, or each one of these, like I mentioned, you know, there's a end-of-the-year reconciliation, so it's a justification from that department over to Health and Human Services.
Thanks.
Anything else from board members? Kylie, would you pull a vote, please?
Supervisor McClair?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. Okay, item number 26, authorize the temporary closure of North and South Indian Road from the Howland Quett Cemetery to the Howland Quett Hall Community Center from 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM on Saturday, September 10, 2016.
Good morning.
Heidi?
I'm available to answer any questions you may have. It's one that you see each year, pretty much the same, same request, same area that they're requesting it for, same conditions as far as providing traffic safety and notification to all those who need to know that the road will be closed.
Move to approve.
Okay.
I have a motion in a second. Any public comment? Seeing no public comment, then I'll bring it back to the board. Comments? Questions?
To me, this is one, and I don't know how much time, how much staff time it takes to review and prepare, but it seems to me that this could be an authorization that we could do on a three-year period or a four-year period, so you wouldn't have to be, we wouldn't have to have staff since we do it over and over again.
That's a great idea. We will look into, and if that's the case, we will definitely make that recommendation to this organization or this group and to others.
It would be easier.
Yeah, it would.
Your department has too much to do.
Yeah, thank you.
Anything else? Kylie, would you pull a vote, please?
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor McClair?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. I'm going to ask Supervisor Howard to take over for item number 27. I have to recuse myself for conflict of interest.
Thank you, Chair, and presenting for us today is Matthew Leir, Lightner, of the Border Coast Regional Airport Authority, discussion of Macbeth Field Obstructions and Removal CAAP Project.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Supervisors. Matthew Lightner, Airport Director, Border Coast Regional Airport Authority. This is a follow-up to the planned specifications and engineer's estimate that you approved back in May. This is pertaining to an obstruction removal project on the west end of Macbeth Field in Clamath Glen, California, paid for largely in part by CAAP funds. We went out for bid, we had a pre-bid meeting, and two bids were received. Hemmingson Contracting Company Incorporated at $45,700, and Mountain Enterprises at $115,000. Mountain Enterprises was much higher because of mobilization costs. They're out of Placerville, California. So once again, this is being done pursuant to our 14 CFR Part 77 Protected Airspace requirements. It concerns about one acre of trees and brush on the west side, and everything is ready to go.
Move to approve the award to Macbeth Obstruction Project Contracting Amount of $45,700 to Hemmingson Construction. Number two, authorize the airport director to sign the grant award and change orders totaling up to 10% of the contract award. Number three, authorize the airport director to adjust the project scope as delineated.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Public comment? Seeing no public comment, we'll move it back to the board. Additional comments?
Thanks for looking out for Clamath.
You got it. Our pleasure. Thank you. Supervisor Gitlin?
Just remember how people get about trees.
Thank you, Vice Chair.
Yes, indeed.
Matt, tell us how the scope has changed. Part of this is authorize the director to adjust the project scope. Is this FAA requirement?
No, it's a, it's a potential Caltrans requirement.
Oh, Caltrans?
Yeah.
Caltrans Aeronautical Unit, the gentleman on Sacramento, Philip?
Miller.
Philip Miller?
Mm-hmm. Correct.
All right. That was my question on who was required, because when I was down there, I was looking, looking it over, and I said, "Where are the trees to be cut?" And you identified it as the west end.
Correct. Between the river and runway 1-1.
Further comment from the board? Seeing none, Kylie, can you please pull a vote?
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor McClair?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Howard?
Yes.
Thank you.
And just to clarify, it's, the contract is not with me, you know? But, but because Hemmingson Contracting does do business with my business, I feel the need to recuse myself. So it isn't that I'm signing a contract or have a contract with, with the, with this project. Okay. I think we're down to item number 28. Discuss the funding request from the City of Crescent City regarding, guarding your park in the amount of $2,000 as requested by Supervisor Howard. Chris?
Thank you, and I'd like to introduce Kimmy Scott, City Clerk, and to help make this presentation, and also Connie Battlesburg.
I'd like to say good morning, but good, good noon, Chair Hemmingson and Supervisors. So I'm, I'm hoping at this point that everybody has at least heard of Find Your Park Crescent City. We've been working diligently for months now to create this new event for our community. It actually started with some brainstorming that happened between Supervisor Howard and Ms. Battlesburg here from the National Park Service about how we could sort of stimulate the local economy. And then Ms. Connie and myself went out and did a separate meeting in Beachfront Park so that she could learn about the city's plans for the development of the park over the next 20 years. And then she went back and kind of got the things taken in her head, and she came back to me with the idea of, hey, you know, it's a centennial celebration for the National Park Service, and maybe we could do something with this, with the park, and stimulate the economy. So we went and started inviting some community partners to see who would be interested, because something like this you can't do on your own. It takes help from everybody. And it sort of developed a life of its own at that point. So while I am here presenting to you, I in no way want to take responsibility for what has happened. It's been a true community team effort. And I'm not going to go through all of the details with you, but I provided a packet so you can see just all of the great activities that we have going on. And there are so many agencies, organizations, businesses, locals that have participated in planning this and are going to be activity leaders. The brief overview, day one is going to be come together and celebrate in the park, and it's basically just going to be a lot of great outdoor activities at Beachfront Park, live music, food, kayaking, stand-up paddle boarding, pony rides, storytelling, art show, a lot of great stuff. And then at day one, people will be able to sign up for day two to go out and explore different parts of Delnart County. And take a horseback ride, go on a nature hike, learn about tide pools, do something that they've always wanted to do. And so we have gotten a marketing sponsorship from Lithia Motors, so we will be doing radio marketing in Eureka, R County, Curry County, and up in the Medford area. The Triplet has been great, and has been running print save-the-date ads for us now for a couple of months, at a value over $3,000. We just, I could go on and on about everybody that's participated. But at this point, you know, it's been, this has been my first rodeo, and it's the first rodeo for Find Your Park. We haven't been really sure in what capacity would be best for the county to participate. So I'm here to ask, we have some funding needs that are left, that are uncovered, particularly porta-potties, you know, it's not the glorious stuff, recruiting the sound engineer to do the sounding for the stage. I've got there on your last page, just kind of a list of some of the stuff there. We'd like to have a shuttle on Sunday to help transport people around that maybe don't usually get to do things like this because of the lack of transportation. And then you always know something like this, there's the things that you don't think about. And I hate to have that last-minute scramble and have something fall through the cracks. I could ask you for $5,000, and I could easily spend it and make this event even better. I could get $1,000 from you today and be very, very thankful, and I'd go out and do good work with that money. I thought that $2,000 was a good amount that would help us accomplish the things that we need to accomplish and provide that little bit of contingency money, so.
Okay, Connie, did you have anything else?
I just want to say and give Kimmy kudos for all the work that she has done. She has spent numerous hours on this event. As a national park employee, not allowed or permitted to work with private businesses in the area, and just Kimmy has taken the bull by the horns, sort of, I can say that, okay? Bull by the horns, and has, has continued to grow this event. There's a collaboration with the Forest Service, the national state parks, the cultural, the cultural, I also want to say the cultural committee, the Chamber of Commerce, various other groups, Building Healthy Communities, the Recreation Center here in town. We just have a huge number of people who have, who have stood up to the plate and are willing to come forward to help participate to make this event great. And initially, when I worked with or talked to Chairman Howard, the goal was to, to stimulate the economy by bringing in more visitation to the area, but we also want to know, or state that our goal is to help bring people who would otherwise stay in their homes out to the park to participate and do something healthy with their families. So both to bring people into the area, to potentially fill up the hotels, to, to go to the various restaurants we have here in addition to enjoy the parks, and potentially take home the idea that Crescent City is a great place, Delnart, Delnart is a great place, and for other people to come back in the future.
Thanks.
A couple of questions.
Kimmy, did you have something else you wanted to throw in there?
I just wanted, just one quick on top of that, you know, the promotion of community pride as well, because we have such a great and beautiful place here, and sometimes when we get caught up in the rat race of our own lives, we forget about that, and we want it to be a reminder to all of our citizens as well.
Great. Martha?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions that some people were talking about the barbecue wars, and where and how do they find out about that? And then where and how do they have to come the first day in order to like get the rat trip, to buy, you know, to do that? So what kind of cost should people expect? And then where do they go to get information to participate?
Certainly. So for the barbecue wars, that is a component of Find Your Park, and so the cost for that, they were still hammering out some of the final cost for that, but the Chamber website has information as far as signing up if you'd like to be a barbecue competitor or a barbecue vendor for that activity. And then as far as day two activities, excuse me, to make it easy on the different businesses that are, and other entities that are doing activities on day two, we are asking that people do come on day one to sign up. Basically, what they're going to say is, you know, for example, I'm doing horseback rides, I can take 20 people at 2:00, and you have to be at least eight years old. And that way, we can have the list there, so people will be able to come to the big tent on day one, see all the different options, and sign up for what they want. As far as cost goes, there is a wide range. There's going to be a lot of activities that are free, and other activities will be lower cost than normal. For example, in North Coast Ocean Sports, we'll be providing free stand-up paddle boarding and kayaking on day one, and on day two, they are going to do two-hour tours for $10, which is unheard of. This has really been a great place, not only for us to promote our community as a whole, but individual businesses have a place to encourage people to try them out for the first time. And we've had a lot of people jump on board for that, so. And, and why don't you speak about Michael Muir?
Okay, of course, I think most people have probably heard about Michael Muir, the great grandson to John Muir. He is coming up here with his disability-accessible horse and carriage, and he will be providing free rides to everyone, and we're actually closing down the city streets to be able to give everyone an opportunity, whether you are on the horse and carriage, or whether you choose to be at Beachfront Park, everyone will be able to see the horse and carriage go by, catering to veterans and people with disabilities in addition to others.
Thanks. Roger, do you have something?
First of all, ladies, great job. I can't remember the last time we had a Labor Day event. It's that holiday period, which is probably the best weather of the year, as nothing happens. So now you've got a two-day event, and I'm really proud of you. So the, the $2,000 investment, I'm just adding these numbers up, was about 15%, 18%. Is it about $12,000 you allocated on this budget funding needed? I'm adding up these numbers. Is that about right?
You know, honestly, I am not a financial guru, and I have not.
$3,000.
Tallyed everything that's on here, but, but yeah, it's a.
How many, just ballpark, how many others are in the county, those parks?
How many what are in the county?
Your parks, I mean, there's a number of different parks, Find Your Park.
So the way that we defined Find Your Park, for Find Your Park, is really any sort of outdoor space that you can recreate in. And when I initially did this presentation to the city council, we had a list of about 20-something parks.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion to allocate $2,000 funding to the City of Crescent City to Find Your Park, as requested by Supervisor Howard.
Any public comment?
Seeing no public comment, then, and I don't, you know, I'm very supportive of this. It wasn't very long ago that Supervisor Howard and I were asking national parks for money to do promotions, and now the tables have turned a little bit. Very supportive of the, of the city's efforts. Have you asked the Chamber and the Visitors Bureau for funds?
The Chamber has participated in other ways, primarily they're helping with this barbecue wars, which has been coined, I'm going to wars, which has been coined, I'm going to say it very carefully, grills gone wild. So, they have been helping to promote overall with doing some funding for like print marketing in other areas. They are funding three porta-potties for that portion of the park, and they are doing radio ad as well. So, they are participating, but they're mostly promoting that event as a component of this event.
Because I think normally that's where, I mean, we fund those organizations so they can fund these types of things. And I don't know, I don't know where Supervisor Gitlin is taking this money from to be able to just to say, we're going to give $2,000. That's my only concern. And normally, we give those funds to the Visitors Bureau, to the Chamber, to do these types of, not that I'm not supportive of it, I am very supportive of it. But I'm just curious as to where are we taking these funds from? David?
Likewise, I'm extremely supportive. It's great, you know, and I struggled with this a little last night. I know we shouldn't pick about how many parks are in the county, how many in the city, the TOT that goes to the city that doesn't go to the county. It's a great community coming together, you know, and I think it's a step in the right direction. But can we, since you have $1,850 worth of need, and you ask for $2,000, can we have an amendment to that maximum or not to exceed? Because the porta-potties, $660, great. Contingency, if you don't use your contingency or for additional marketing or the radio station or somebody else's one of their business picks it up, then we don't want to contribute if somebody else can. Likewise, with the Sunday Shuttle, if you can approach RCT, Redwood Coast Transit, and they would donate time, then I would like to step in where needed, I guess is what I'm trying to articulate.
I understand. And certainly, I understand putting a limit on the contingencies. Just to clarify, though, the porta-potties, I did negotiate heavily with them to receive a 25% reduction already. The shuttle costs that you see there are after negotiating with Redwood Coast Transit. So, I have been trying to do some, and don't let me leave out Connie, certainly. She's been at my side. But we've been negotiating these costs down as much as we can already, so.
And in regard to the parks, you guys asked for some clarification in regard to the parks. When we sat down, we stated that we would only include the parks within the Del Norte County boundaries. So, every park that will be mentioned will be within the Del Norte County boundaries, whether it be for the Forest Service, the National and State Parks, et cetera.
Cool. Okay. So, anybody else? Chris?
And we would also like one of you to stand up and speak at 10:00 in the morning on Saturday, September 4th.
Okay. I'm sure we can get a volunteer. Supervisor Howard evidently got some white hair.
You're the chair, Mr. Hemmingson.
I, yeah, 10:00 is a bad time for me on Saturday, but I will see if I can't get somebody to stand in. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Kylie, would you pull the vote, please? Do you need some clarification, Jay, or anything on?
Once you do the vote, then you're going to need to direct me to find the money. The existing budget under the promotions budget and advertisement doesn't have a line for this, so you're going to have to direct me to do that. I will look at multiple budgets in order to pull that out.
Okay. And along that lines, I don't know how you articulate it, but like I said, if we, if we paid everything that you asked for here, it would only be $1,800, $1,850 or something. And if you use less contingency, be even less than that. So, can we get building arrears? So, in other words, if you find other partners, we don't need to backfill to reduce that cost to the county.
How about, maybe what we could do is-
Work the staff to do that.
-work with Kimmy in regards to a small budget for the $2,000, be able to then utilize that as I take it through the Auditor Controller for approval.
Yes.
And the Visitors Bureau, were they asked for funds?
Yeah, so I have been at a Visitors Bureau meeting, and Jeff Palmer's been at the table for almost every single one of these meetings. It is very convoluted, I guess, kind of the way when you have 20 partners working together, the way it's kind of developed. And I hope that next year will be much more organized, because we do plan on going for round two, so hold on to your hats for that one. But, so, you know, the needs have come about as they have come about, and the Chamber and Visitors Bureau has already taken on this other work with marketing and advertising, and is basically told that they've, they're already stretched with their other needs with Fourth of July budget and with the Sea Cruise budget. This came about after everybody, like you guys are struggling with right now, after everybody's budgets were already set this year, it's just kind of manifested. So, everybody's kind of scratching their pennies to pull it together.
Yeah.
Just to clarify, when I say go look at the other budgets, this will come out of existing lines in other budgets. I have looked at the recreation budget, parks and beaches, promotions. It'll probably be looking at the Board of Supervisors or Admin to reduce a line and maybe do a transfer, depending on what the situation is.
Okay. Transfer right out of our contribution to the Visitors Bureau. Just kidding.
Just make sure you look at, that you look at the possibility of like sanitation, that since we're doing porta-potties, that you might find some little money in there.
And I think Jeff Palmer has done a great job in regard to supporting this event. He's actually helped us in regard to coordinating and scheduling and everything else, letting us know exactly what we needed to do based on his experience. They're also loaning out the Cultural Center to the Arts and Crafts, what is it called? The- Okay. Well, the city, the city is loaning that out in addition to, you know, just, I think Jeff Palmer's done a great job in regard to assisting.
I would never have thought of porta-potties as even a need. That's how green I am, so.
There can be a need.
And the variety of porta-potties that one can acquire.
Okay. Kylie, would you pull the vote, please?
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Finnegan?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Chair Hemmingson?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you for your organization skills and getting it going.
Do you want to discuss now or about where you're going to get this money or?
Assuming from what I discussed already that the board is going to put that on me to go look and find it. There are different-
Martha says Health and Human Services for sanitation needs.
It was just an idea.
Oh, I'm good with it.
We'll look at multiple budgets. Obviously, if there's a way to do it with the least impact of the general fund, we will. But what it ends up being is that if it's not in a budgeted line, we will pull it out of an existing budget, and that budget will be reduced. That's the ultimate action that will be taken.
Okay. All right. Item 29, consider miscellaneous legislative and budget matters. Anything, Jay?
Well, there's quite a bit out there as Supervisor Finnegan went over on the propositions and what's going to be on the agenda for November. I think for all the board members, be familiar with Prop 57, which is the initiative to send more state inmates to the streets and local areas, because Prop 47 has had a significant impact on counties in regards to the services that are provided here and also the, some of the ramifications from 47. So, I think those are things that we need to keep an eye on and talk to the legislature about funding potential for their impacts once they happen. But once the, once the legislature comes back, we'll see a flurry, and then we'll see what the, what the push is for November also. As far as the budget, the Auditor Controller is going line by line right now. He's going to be providing us with those final numbers here pretty soon with the fund balance. There's been some corrections that have had to be made. Some departments have been contacted to make those changes, so we're still waiting in regards to those, and he's working on those diligently. So, I would hope at the next meeting, I would have a general idea for the board of what our last push is, knowing full well that there will be a last push, but looking at some of those numbers once they're finalized by the Auditor, then we'll go from there.
And we just added another $2,000 to your issues, but maybe we-
Well, actually, not necessarily, because it will be reduced from what you've already approved. So, that's not an impact in sense.
Okay.
A department's going to have to give up some funding.
But we do have some golf fields out there that we could, since they're open spaces, that maybe we could hit up, hit up some of those golf field owners. Okay. Is there anything else from board members?
I just think that we should probably put together a letter on Prop 47, on the failures, and possibly remedies, because I think that part of the problem is that you could have a sheriff or a police person could actually have had contact and written citations to someone for 22 times. There needs to be a threshold in Prop 47, because for them to just get the walk, and I mean, I just read an article the other day of a little community where the guy had 21 citations of, you know, misdemeanor, because everything's a misdemeanor now. But it should be somehow, when those misdemeanors start to boil up, they should reach a point where that person needs to be assisted to drug court or assisted to incarceration. Because in the interim, there's no services for them. And they just don't show up.
Yeah, I'm in full agreement with Supervisor McClure, and if it does take a letter from this board, actually moving action in that direction, I think, would be more than appropriate, having that conversation, however it looks. I know Supervisor Finnegan is definitely on point on these conversations at a state level, so if you have recommendation, Supervisor, on how best that's done, please let us know.
Well, and the full Board of CSAC is, will be discussing all the recommendations from the committees up through the Executive Board. And 57 has a lot to do, I mean, it's all over the board. It has to do with juvenile sentencing, allowing the judges' purview over whether a juvenile goes to adult court or not, rather than the DA doing it. So, there's, and there most definitely is going to be an implication locally, yeah.
We are getting contact with RCRC and CSAC, obviously, and they'll come back with the, their proposal as regard to support or take no action or to-
Are they looking at that Q-10?
There's a robust discussion on 47 from a lot of different angles, and so through, you know, those groups as well as our lobbyists, as well as direct discussions with our Senator, the issues are well-understood, I believe, at the local level. I think what, you know, for our purposes here, you know, the property crimes are something that has come to the forefront, and it's definitely an impact that I think can be quantified through the Sheriff's Office with arrests, with reports, also with the help of the DA as we go through that, too. But I think it's going to be a process of staying involved in it and making sure that everybody's voice is heard and try to come up with a solution at some point. But right now, the effort on 47 was to reduce the number of inmates in the state prison, and why it may have been successful at that, we have some impacts.
Well, and they're all not as easy as you think. And a perfect example is the revenue bond statewide border approval. Sounds like a good idea. The ceiling, I think, is $2 billion, except that they said if you're tied in any way to it, that that adds towards the $2 billion. So, it just does, so if it's a road project, $500,000 road project, but it's tied to a highway system, you exceed the $2 billion really quick. And case in point, that can hit home to just about everybody, if you want Los Angeles and San Diego to have to vote on whether a revenue bond is a source of funding last chance, great, I don't think you want that. So, it goes to, while it's a good idea perhaps in principle, it erodes local control, and that's not a good idea. And so, those are, nothing's going to be easy this election.
Okay. Anybody got anything else? With that, we are going to listen to Jay.
You'll be reconvening in closed session.
Oh, that's right.
During the closed session.
At what time? Was it Wednesday or-
1:00. We are going to convene in closed session at 1:00 PM. As I said earlier, we will probably not be reporting anything out, or we will not be reporting anything out, I guess. With that, we're done here.